Recording started?
Yes.
All right. Calling the Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, Tumwater City Council Work Session to Order. And all the council members are here except Councilmember Kathy, who is excused this evening. We've had an adjustment to the agenda. We have just one item, which is the Medic One Advanced Life Support Contract Amendment, and that's with the fire department. So I am going to go ahead and turn it over to staff. And Chief Hurley, are you going to start or?
Oh, Chief Hurley.
Okay, so I will turn it over to Chief Hurley.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members for being here tonight to see our presentation related to Medic One and some contract amendments to consider. Just wanted to briefly restate a few things that we talked about actually at a work session. Gosh, I can't remember the date. It was a couple of months ago. Anyway, when this opportunity first came up, just for some background, Medic One, Thurston County Medic One, who we partner with to provide advanced life support services, has an interest in adding an additional paramedic unit in the county. It would be the eighth paramedic unit in the county. Their problem statement, this is from Medic One, is that in the urban areas, we're seeing increasing response times that are projected to go over the threshold that they've set to add an additional medic unit in the county. There was a study done, and if anyone wants more detail, I'd be happy to sit down with you and explain how all this worked. But it was a pretty in-depth study. And just real briefly here, the blue crosses are really the existing fire stations in the county through not just any single jurisdiction, but a number of jurisdictions across the county. The black and white kind of EMS symbols there are where current paramedic units are located in the system. And as we've talked about before, there are two in Olympia. There are two staffed in Tumwater, although one of those is down in the Rochester area. We staffed the unit down there. And then Lacey Fire District Three also staffs three units. Two of those are in the Lacey area and one of them in Yell. That's how the current system is set up. This graphic just shows the red areas. That's kind of where the most calls are located. And so the analysis was done over all the calls in 2023, basically saying if we put the new unit at any of these blue crosses, which produces the best results for response times. The top three that came out, number one was our station T2. The second one was Station 33, which is on Mullen Road. I always forget that. And then Station 01, which is on East Side Street in downtown Olympia. Those are the top three recommendations from the study. And why Station T2 ends up being a good candidate really is access, because there's access into downtown Olympia. There's access to Capital 099, to I-5101. And it says direct support to Medic Five, Medic Ten, and Medic Four. That's certainly our paramedic unit here in Tumwater. Medic Ten is on the west side of Olympia, and Medic Four is out towards Lily Road. So we will be able to directly support those units. Talking about how this really benefits and creates opportunities for the city. You know, this is a partnership. This unit responds not just in the city, but will have a response zone in the county that they're responsible for as well. And this just goes over our current staffing right now to remind everyone. We have Battalion T1, which has Battalion Chief on it. Engine T1 has three staff on it. And Medic Five has two staff on it here at Station T1 by City Hall. Currently, Station T2 has an engine company staff with three. And the proposal is to staff an additional medic unit, a new medic unit there at Station T2. So that would bring the total fire staff in the city to 11 from the current nine. And remember, we also have Medic 14 staffed in Rochester that we rotate our staff down to keep that unit up and running in South County. So how does this improve things? A few things to mention here. This is really in alignment with the public safety strategic priorities and goals that we've talked about, and the ones specifically are ensuring timely, efficient, and effective public safety response in our community, and exploring and implementing partnerships to improve efficiency and service delivery. And also, really, you know, we've had a longstanding relationship with Medic One. It just continues to enhance that relationship. But really, one of the big keys here is in the city, our staffing going from nine to 11 on duty. Having that paramedic unit in the north end of the city will improve our advanced life support paramedic response times in the north part of the city, because the unit won't be coming from here at Station One. It would be already coming from the north end of the city. It improves paramedic coverage in that, remember, right now, at any given time, Medic Five, our unit in the city, it could be somewhere else in the county. So we don't always have a unit here in Tumwater, and that's where we rely on the system to bring Medic Ten or Medic Four typically from Olympia into Tumwater for a paramedic unit. So having that second paramedic unit in the city provides much better paramedic coverage in the city. Also talk about something we talked about with our strategic plan that we brought forth recently is an area we need to improve in is our effective response force for firefighting in the city. And that really is defined by our ability to assemble 15 firefighters typically within eight minutes on the scene of an incident. And we're able to do that in a small area in the north part of the city, but we're deficient in the remaining part of the city in that. So by having two extra firefighters on duty, it enhances our effective response force and the ability to assemble crews on scene quicker to structure fire, because these staffed are also trained as firefighters. Also mention that with that engine and medic unit being at Station Two together, that's five staff who are able to respond to a fire and get there quickly, it allows us to meet what's called the two-in, two-out requirement for firefighting. The way the WAC is written and really national standards are recognized that if you're going to go into what's called, you know, a hazardous environment to rescue somebody, a crew of two has to go in, and there has to be a crew of two standing by outside to help and rescue them if they are needed. So we have standards called two-in, two-out. Having that crew responding together enables us to affect that more quickly on the scene of a fire. And certainly, our daily minimum staffing is one of the things that's evaluated by the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau every five years. As we were just evaluated last year, we were able to improve our rating last year, and this will put us on a trajectory, hopefully, to continue to improve it. And those insurance ratings are used by many insurers to set property insurance rates, not all, but many. So it leads to lower property insurance rates in many cases. So in order to make this happen, we have met with staff at Thurston County Medic One, staff and also representatives from EMS Council to hammer out some agreements that needed to take place. And just as a reminder, we have a current advanced life support interlocal agreement. The main contract is valid through the end of next year, so we're talking about amendments to that agreement. We've already amended it twice, and you can see what those amendments dealt with. The proposed amendments we're talking about tonight are three, four, and five. And there's a reason why we needed to separate these out, and I'll try to touch on that. So please ask questions if you have them as we go along here. I'm pulling along my own notes here. Okay, so Amendment Three specifically talks about a topic called the ALS or Advanced Life Support Academy. This is actually an amendment that was in the works before we started talking about the new paramedic unit. This was just a new model to bring new paramedics onboard. An important thing about this amendment is this amendment applies to all three contracting agencies, Tumwater, Olympia, and Lacey Fire District Three. And just for background, it says the county medical program director, the NPD, must approve each paramedic to work under their license. So our paramedics work directly under the supervision of the physician through protocols. They're delegated the authority to basically practice medicine. Historically, when we've hired new paramedics, we bring them onboard. You know, Fire Academy is a separate issue we'll talk about. But certainly, they need to be familiar with our protocols, our practices, and our equipment. They're nationally registered paramedics, but we have things that are unique locally here that they need to be familiar with and trained upon. So typically, those new paramedics would ride third. They would be an extra medic who's, you know, practicing their skills, but with the support of another paramedic as a preceptor, basically. Or typically around 10 full 24-hour shifts. They would do that to be brought up to speed. Then they would meet with the medical program director for another interview, and the medical program director would basically decide if they were ready to go. And if they weren't, we oftentimes just have some remediation, and then they move forward. This approach kind of changes that a bit. We want to start what's called an Advanced Life Support Academy. So this would be basically a six-week period where they would be assigned day shift, and they would have a structured training program to go through all the skills that we are asking them to perform. You know, I'll just throw out a couple of things that are unique about Thurston County. We're actually using portable ultrasound in the field now, which is pretty cutting-edge. That's one of the very unique things that our paramedics do that, you know, they need to learn about. So we're going to have this Advanced Life Support Academy. Paramedics from Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater would attend. Our current paramedics would be part of the instructor pool for that. So this agreement with Medic One allows Medic One to help cover those costs. We would pay the overtime for them to go to instruct at the academy, and Medic One will reimburse up to $40,000 for that academy to cover our expense for the salaries to do that training. So this really relates to Medic One's ability to reimburse us for providing those instructors for the academy. At the bottom, it talks about Fire Academy fiscal responsibility. So let's separate out this new paramedic unit here for a second. In general, when we hire a new paramedic, when they go to Fire Academy, typically, we bear 100% of their salary and benefits while they're at the Fire Academy. Once they're approved to work as a paramedic in the county, Medic One then picks up their share, which is typically 80% of that. So that's the standard way that we would do this. But as we're going to see in Amendment Five, that creates some flexibility on payment for that. So I'll touch on that when we get there. So, oh, and just for information, Amendment Three and Amendment Four, once they're approved by EMS Council, the Medic One director has the authority to sign those agreements and put them in place. We'll touch on Amendment Five here later. It has to go to the Board of County Commissioners, so that's the one that will take a little more time. Amendment Four, really, this addresses the need for us to start hiring these paramedics. Typically, Medic One funds up to nine. It's figured at 9.5 positions, so the city decides whether we're going to hire nine or 10 people, but we get reimbursed for 9.5 positions. For this new medic unit, we want to start hiring in December, and this would allow us to bring four of those staff onboard in December to start them into a process to get them lined up to be in the ALS Academy, and then, if needed, a Fire Academy in early 2025. So this allows us to ramp up hiring. To do this, we had come back a while ago and asked to have our FTEs increase from 53 to 56, which we did. We would need to bump that to 57 for 2024. And just so you know, currently, we're at 52 FTE positions filled. We have an open fire prevention officer, which may or may not be filled by the end of the year. So that 53 plus four is how we get to meeting 57. All right, so let's go on to Amendment Five. So this really just allows us to start the hiring process in 2024. Amendment Five, this is the biggest one, that really covers the initial startup costs for the new paramedic unit. This unit would authorize, this amendment would authorize an additional 9.5 full-time employees starting January 1. So four of them would be hired in December, another five would be hired in January. It states that only positions filled will be paid until the unit is operational 24/7. That is mentioned because for our two existing medic units, as we have fluctuations in staff, sometimes maybe we only have eight paramedics or seven paramedics assigned to that unit. We're still able to go Medic One for 9.5 positions. We just build them at step three. So that's the current practice. As we stand this new unit up, we'll only be paid for the positions that we've actually filled until they're all filled and the unit is operational. Then, as staffing fluctuates, we'll still be able to get reimbursed for 9.5 positions. So that's what that means. And as we have for Medic Five right now, the general agreement is Medic One reimburses 80% of salary, benefits, and necessary equipment, much like firefighting turnout here. Uniforms were able to be reimbursed for 80% of those costs. This also authorizes $20,000 in 2025 for administration related to the new medic unit. And just for information, we also received $20,000 for Medic Five and Medic 14. So this would boost the total from $40,000 to $60,000 for medic unit administration. One thing I didn't mention under the salary part above is Medic One also, each month, we bill them an additional 6% to help cover our overtime costs. So we're also getting some funds from Medic Five, or I'm sorry, Medic One to help cover our overtime costs. This defines the station location as being at Tumwater Station Two. And as we move forward, we'll be working with Medic One to define what that new medic response zone looks like, because that unit will cover probably out towards Black Lake. It'll probably cover up into west Olympia a little bit. We need to define what that area looks like. This agreement also provides reimbursement for startup costs up to $475,000. And it mentions salaries and benefits deemed non-reimbursable in Amendment Three. Earlier, when we mentioned Amendment Three, it stated that Medic One would not cover salaries during the Fire Academy. This would allow us, if the city chose to, to use part or all of those funds to reimburse for salaries during the Fire Academy. So this takes care of the new employee salaries through Fire Academy. That money could also be used for temporary housing and facility costs associated with T2 upgrades. You know, we are in the process of letting out an RFQ for an architect, for, in general, city services. We would use that architect to help us lay out what the new design would look like and really build a timeline and help us determine if we need to move out of that station, how long that might occur. Obviously, we're going to try to design a process where we don't have to move out of that station, but it's possible that we might have to for a short period of time, as you can imagine, construction occurs and some water shut off and things like that. And also, that money then could be used, if the city chose to, for any tenant and building improvements, actual costs of construction. Really, let's just wrap it up here. Next steps in the process, certainly, these have been reviewed by legal here in the city, and we'll continue to do a final review, make sure everything is appropriate. We've got to also point out, as I mentioned earlier, that the county must also approve these amendments. Particularly, Number Five has to go to the Board of County Commissioners. We have been doing recruitment activities. Our HR folks here at the city have been assisting us. Yesterday, we interviewed five paramedic candidates, and I'll tell you, we have some outstanding candidates to help us fill these new positions. We have been able to make some conditional offers. And remember, the conditional offer just means we're going to put you through a background medical, physical suitability assessment before an actual job offer would go out. So it's not a sure thing. It's just we needed to get that process going. The paramedic job market is very competitive, and several of these applicants that we're meeting with and interviewing, they have offers in other places, some of them for the city of Olympia. So we're having to really move quickly on this to get the offers out there, to get these employees in the pipeline. So after that's complete and all the contracts are in place, we can make formal offers of employment. We're going to continue to evaluate our options for Station T2 improvements through the use of an architect and our city's facilities staff. Our goal is to bring these amendments back to you, the council, next week as action items. And with that, I would just put it out there, certainly, we can bring it to consent, or we can bring it to consideration. We can open it up again and have a short presentation again if we need to.
All right, I have a couple of questions. Hands up. Councilmember Jefferson was first, and Councilmember Doha.
Yes, Chief, thank you. So I would like to see what the numbers look like. What does that 80% to 20% breakdown look like for the cost? That graph and that chart would be helpful, so people can see the numbers.
Well, briefly, we can turn it over to Troy. Is that all right? I know he's on the meeting. We've got some basic numbers that could be provided for you with regards to salaries.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Troy, are you able?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Unfortunately, I don't have a chart prepared to share with you. I wish I would have thought of that. I do have a piece of paper with my notes on it with some estimates here. So for the first month, if this goes forward and we hired, as Brian described, the first four in December, the gross cost to the city salaries and benefits would be just a hair under $45,000 for that month, and just about $36,000 would be reimbursable for Medic One. So the net cost of the city would be $8,993 for going into the next biennium. And this is assuming we hired all of these starting January 1st. So it would be the full next two years of the biennium. The first year, all salaries and benefits for all nine staff, $1,255,060. Year two, assuming, you know, a cost of living and things like that, $1,308,819. So total cost for the biennium, a little over $2.5 million. And of that, a little more than $2 million would be reimbursable through Medic One for a net cost of the city for the entire biennium, $512,776.
Thank you, Troy.
Right. Thanks. I just wanted that in a chart, but you explained it well. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Doha.
Thank you. So, Chief, with regards to consideration or consent, taking lessons learned from the regional fire authority that failed in our community, I think it's really important to share their current state and the need and have strengthened that foundation of why we're going in this direction, because we have to go back and identify a new building or, you know, a future proposed fire station over by SB SEC. I think it's really important to have increased transparency of why we're needed to do this, so it helps us with future work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember fourth up.
Thank you, Mayor. So just at this point, I appreciate the presentation. Do we have, so we have, you said you've already spoken to five people. Are they part of our staff already, or are these new firefighters from different areas? Or who are these folks?
Yeah. Yeah, we've actually interviewed, currently, we've interviewed 10 people total, I believe. There are a couple of them who are lateral candidates from other fire jurisdictions who are currently working as paramedics and fire departments. Many of them are brand-new paramedics right out of school is where we see a lot of our new hires come from. We've interviewed candidates actually from across the country, who, you know, one of our interviews was someone from out of state yesterday on a Zoom meeting, and we've had a few of those. So word has traveled far and wide. We have a great pool of candidates, I think. Many of them, though, are brand-new. In fact, one of them was a paramedic student intern who had ridden here the last several months and now is a certified paramedic.
I just remember being on EMS, that Councilmember Jefferson's on. It was always seemed that it was really difficult to recruit or to hire or get EMTs even through the training and all. So this is really remarkable to get that many new people trained, so.
Yeah, we're pretty excited. Obviously, one of the concerns, you know, with the trouble we've had hiring over the past several years was, you know, hiring nine is a large group. It's certainly the largest group we've ever considered hiring. So we're very pleased we're to the point we're at with potentially being able to make offers as soon as these contracts are ready to go.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right. So this will, then, I'm under the understanding we'll come to the consent, consideration, sorry, consideration on our next agenda. All right, I started out with the word, and it didn't quite work. All right. So hopefully, we'll have a little easier evening tonight. Next is Mayor's City Administration Report, and I will start with Administrator Parks.
Thank you. So I think what I'll do, council members, is address the timeline for the biennial budget review process, excuse me. And Tracy is going to put up just one quick slide that I prepared this afternoon so that we could kind of take a look at this chronologically, what the next steps are. So we had our first workshop a couple of weeks ago on September 24th, so that is complete. We have rescheduled the workshop number two to October 22nd work session. That is the only agenda item on that work session, so we intend to do a full two hours worth of review of the budget. We are required to have two different public hearings on our budget. So both the tax levy public hearing and the first public hearing for the budget will be on our Monday, November 4th, regular council meeting, just an asterisk there that November 5th is Election Day.
May I share perks? I'm sorry. Is a slide being shared, because I don't see anything?
Oh, it is. Hang on one moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it.
Yep. Is anybody seeing the?
No.
No.
If you're going to have just Kelly act it out, that would be great.
Hey, there we go.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's going to help a little bit. Thank you. Thanks, Tracy.
Sorry.
No, no worries. So tax levy public hearing on Monday, November 4th, along with the first budget hearing that we're required to have, the first of two. Election Day, General Election Day is November 5th, so we always have our meeting, regular business meeting on Monday of that week. We'll have a workshop number three on November 12th. And once again, that is the only item on that work session agenda, so we've got plenty of time to be able to review. And that gives you an opportunity to have, to take public comment and consider that in terms of things that you might want to talk about during the workshop number three. So that's some important timing. And then November 19th is a busy evening. We will ask you to adopt the tax levy that you've had a public hearing for on November 4th. We will have the second public hearing on the budget on that evening. And then, if we are required to have any 23, 24 budget amendments, which is still outstanding at this point, that would also occur. at this point, that would also occur on November 19th at a public hearing. And then the bylaws, the rules of procedure for the Tomwater Metropolitan Parks District requires and states that on the third Tuesday of November, the TMPD meets for your annual meeting. And so that annual meeting will be at 5:30 on November 19th, prior to our 7 o'clock regular meeting. And at that meeting, along with a report on the activities of this year, you will be asked to have a public hearing and adoption on both the TMPD tax levy as well as the TMPD proposed budget. And then we would anticipate actually having you then adopt the budget on a, a regular meeting on December 3rd. So those are the highlights. I'm happy to actually send this out to you. After the meeting, I can create a PDF and send it to you so you have it as a quick reference, but that is our plan moving forward.
Any questions? Because I don't, I don't see all the people right now.
Okay, okay. So then just a couple other real quick things. Some numbers from Falls Fest. We didn't have those the last time we met, but I got those from Todd today. Thank you, Todd. So preliminary estimates are we had 6,000 people attending Falls Fest and in a few weeks, it sounds like we'll have a better count, a more accurate count of people because we use the geo-fencing technology, which Todd is here, so he can answer any questions if you have questions about that. We were super excited to have four council members and the mayor there at that event along with 12 volunteers to help all those 6,000 people through the event. There were a lot of additional sponsorships as well as in-kind donations and seven food vendors, 15 art vendors, and three entertainers. And a new partnership with the Craft District occurred after hours, after that event. And it was a, at the Craft District and there was some music by Nico and the Night Shift. 80 people attended that and it does sound like we're planning to do some summer concert series in the Craft District in 2025 with Tomwater Arts. And so that was a great start to that new, and, and fun partnership. And then this last, past Saturday, we had cleanup drop-off. So a few numbers from there, we had 330 cars participating. We shredded 4.2 tons of paper. We'll get a little bit more information later about how much food was donated, but the food bank was here. Water resources helped us with battery recycling. The police department helped with medication drop-off. And Tomwater hopes did some lockbox medication giveaways. And again, we had two council members as well as the mayor attending, Councilmember Dahlhoff and Councilmember Forthout. And again, some sponsorships and volunteers from our community businesses, which is really great. And an upcoming event, which highlights some, the competitive nature of some of our council members is coming up actually on this Thursday at Historical Park from 11:30 to 12:15 with the Old Town Center seniors. It's the Chili Cook-Off. And I hear tell that Councilmember Jefferson is intending to take the prize at that competition. And so that will be a lot of fun. Hope to be able to stop by and, and please avail yourself of that. I, I know the seniors love to have visits from city council members and the mayor and it's a lot of fun. And then lastly, because I know many of you are getting questions from constituents, the property owner of the South Pacific restaurant that burned a few months ago was cleared by their insurance company to go ahead with the demolition. They do have a demolition contractor under contract and our stormwater staff as well as our building department staff have been in contact with both the property owner as well as the contractor. They had to do a hazardous materials report and so there are, there is asbestos and so they're, they're needing to apply for that demolition permit with that as a, as sort of the context of when there be, we'll be doing all of that work. They are going to be providing a bond for the demolition work. They are going to be removing the entirety of the foundation and every, all of the fencing will be moved in in order to be more secure and prevent access. And they are working with our stormwater staff to address stormwater needs. And our stormwater staff actually has drafted a notice of violation and that is ready to go if the company, if, if they are a bit slow in moving forward as they've indicated to us, they, they intend to do so. So Councilmember Forthout has a question?
Just if you could send a reminder about the, the Thursday event and then do we have to, are we okay to go? Do we have to notice that if we, let you know if we're going to be there for the chili?
We'll, we'll figure that out. And if we need to do a quick notice, we'll do that tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Before 11:30.
Thanks.
All right. I will send that reminder. Any other questions?
Thank you. All right, with that, I think that was extremely comprehensive and I don't think I have a lot more to add. Just as a note, I did attend the AWC Mayor's Conference in Ellensburg last week, so that was very beneficial. I think it's always great to, to meet with the other mayors in the state. And for those who've been around for a while, our, with Heidi Brevins Genaway, who used to be our, like Assistant City Administrator, she's now the City Manager for, for Ellensburg. So I got to spend a little bit of time catching up with her. So that was, that was a great treat to be able to visit with Heidi. So, and that's all I have. So we are actually going to get out of here a little early tonight. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.